Um, yeah, but it was an email a while ago and I But I know it's like right around this time. Was it this week?
It's last night.
Oh, how was it?
Y'all set?
It was, well, they had problems. They were supposed to leave
We got started.
Savage Port.
Forget how sensitive they are.
Instead, we drove to St. Paul and left for Harriet Island and we went partially down.
That's on one.
Oh, good. The chair.
Oh, no, you're good.
Yes. I'll slide back over one. It's like musical chairs. So you went all the way to St. Paul?
My bus. We met at the, uh...
Come in front or behind.
Switches.
Alright.
And today was a bus journey. Couldn't make the bus journey.
Just want to make sure my
So do they have good turnout?
Yeah, actually, they had quite a few people. And so we went partway down. We went past the airport, past the 494 Bridge. I don't know how far we went. Then turned around and came back to Harriet Island and drove his bus back. I've done it before.
No, that's okay.
It is interesting to know where the, where the Miss... You can tell where the Mississippi and the Minnesota mean. Because Minnesota is much muddier than Mississippi.
Should we start? Yes. Alright, I will call the meeting to order. The first item is to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. The next item is to approve the April 26, 2018 joint session for the comprehensive plan of 2014.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. The next item is to approve the May 17, 2018 Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
There's been a change in the minutes. There was an error that we caught at a staff level, so the minutes have been updated on the website. So if we could make reference that, the meeting minutes that you have, there is an error, but they are up to date on the city website.
Okay. Um, can you point out what the error was?
Sure. So in the public hearing that was held on the Redmond property, it was listed that Ellen Redmond made comment. It was a resident named Vera who lives on Sunny Ridge Drive. So just flipping the name of the resident that gave public comment.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Any other changes to the minutes?
Is there a reason this display is not on? I'm sure actually there is a reason. Oh, wow. Is that gonna do it?
It hasn't turned on yet. Okay, I think it's slowly turning on. A little slow in the warm-up.
Madam Chair, I'll make a, I'll make a, make a motion to approve the amended minutes as reflected currently on our website.
A second to the motion?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carry. The next item is a public hearing for the Meridian Fields preliminary plat and rezoning.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, tonight we will be reviewing a preliminary plat and rezoning for a development called Meridian Fields to be developed by D.R. Horton. We've seen this project a couple times before the Planning Commission, both as a comp plan amendment as well as an annexation. So at this time, we're moving forward with preliminary plat and rezoning. For a bit of reference, as we are, as to where we are, we are south of Highway 212, west of Jonathan Carver Parkway, north of the elementary school. After the Planning Commission meeting, it is anticipated that preliminary plat and rezoning will be forwarded to the council on July 2. Some specifics about the project. This is a very updated version of the concept plan that we've been working through the developer and at a staff level with comment letter. It shows the general layout of the site, which includes 83 single-family homes. You'll see that the development is accessed off Jonathan Carver Parkway. We'll have a nice discussion about access to the site in a couple of slides. And you'll also see that a majority of the west side portion of the site will be maintained within an outlot since it is a wetland. So this is a great representation of what the development will look like with the 83 lots and the outlots that will be included on the property. The development is proposed to be completed in phases. If you can see the dash line that my cursor is currently following, it shows, it shows Phase 1 and Phase 2. So Phase 1 is proposed to be 36 lots, Phase 2 47. This is a plan sheet from the preliminary plat. We're going to discuss the intersection again, so we'll have a robust discussion about this roundabout and some changes that have been made. Some details about the development. When property is annexed into the city of Carver, it is automatically given the designation of agriculture. So the designation now will be moving from agriculture to the city's R2 zoning district. This is a little bit different than development that we've seen lately. They are not requesting a PRD. It will be straight zoning under the R2 district. At the bottom of the screen right now, it shows what the R2 district bulk regulations are compared to Meridian Fields. So the minimum lot size, R2 calls for 7,000. The minimum here is 8,854, with the general average lot being about 1,100 square feet. They are proposing to meet the rest of the side, uh, the setbacks with a bit extra... Ooh, I am sorry. I flipped side and rear on the screen. Otherwise, that would be a very small backyard and a very large side yard. So flip those two numbers. They are proposing to have a bit larger of the rear yard setback than what our city code requires. Something that you might be thinking about is, how does Highway 212 play into this development and what can we do to make this a development that's viable related to noise? So as part of the application, a noise study was completed by the developer. They've also provided this really great cross-section that shows what the development will look like if you're standing in the development and the distance from Highway 212. So through various back and forth between staff and the developer, we have come to a place where there was a wetland that was tucked back here and, or, sorry, a stormwater pond. We've since been able to remove it to allow for some berming and a landscape buffer. So beefing that up a little bit to create more of a buffer between the home and Highway 212. The developer has also indicated that their construction materials will reflect a higher grade for noise. So things like windows will be of a higher construction quality than a typical home to mitigate the noise a bit. It was reflected in the noise report that between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m., the noise would be exceeded for what a residential level should be. Alright, and alluding to the intersection that I've talked about a couple times. So if we've been following this project for a while, the intersection getting into the site has changed a few times. So starting from the top of the slide, working our way down, the concept showed that there was a roundabout within the property for Meridian Fields. The preliminary plat that was reviewed in your packet also included a roundabout, but it shifted onto the UP property, which is directly east of the property. And after discussion with D.R. Horton and UP property, it's been determined that the roundabout likely is not an option due to queuing that's going to be required out of the site. So as a sta-, at a staff level, we needed to think about development of the site larger than just this one development. So everything west that we're anticipating for development will likely use the same street to get onto Jonathan Carver Parkway. And after a review of a traffic study, including a roundabout there, cars would get stuck in the roundabout. They would be waiting to get onto Jonathan Carver Parkway and the queue would exceed through the roundabout, making it unusable for anyone. We've also been working with UP properties who are likely interested in coming in with a commercial project in the near future. So making sure that we're all on the same page together to get the best product for the city, D.R. Horton, UP properties, and all development that will occur west of the property. So this has been a moving target for us for a little bit. The four-way stop is likely. The developer and their engineer are working on updating the plans now, just to reflect what we've been working on collectively as a group. So here's a close-up of that again. This is the ultimate build-out of the site. So this intersection might not look like this for the next 10 years or the next 20 years. But maybe by 2040, as we see a lot of development west, the intersection will likely evolve into something that looks similar to this. So you'll see there's two left lanes turning onto Jonathan Carver Parkway, which is often the concern that we hear. Like, how will I get onto Jonathan Carver Parkway at 8:00 in the morning? So having the ability to have two left-hand turns, we believe, will free up the queuing, which will allow traffic to still move freely either straight or right, and will allow car stacking that will be at a level that the intersection can handle. We're also working on the alignment of Spring Creek Drive at this point. In upcoming plans, Spring Creek Drive may shift either north or south depending on how everything phases out in the next couple weeks. And we may begin working on some work in Ironwood Park to think about that a little differently if there's some right-of-way that the developer may need to build this eventual build-out. Onto one of my favorite topics is the landscape plan for each development. So something that is cool about this project is that they are not required to do any landscape requirements. So no caliper inches are required for replacement because this is largely currently a farm field. So if you drive out there now, you'll see there's not a lot of trees, so not many are proposed to be taken down. So in development of the site, we will be gaining 896 caliper inches of trees, which is significant for the site, thinking about what it looks like today. And there are significant buffers, both on Highway 212. You'll see a pretty thick pocket here buffering from Highway 212 and then here. So we do anticipate that the UP property east will develop commercial. So thinking that we need to have a pretty significant buffer in case there's a parking lot that's lighted. So the developer is providing a significant landscape buffer. You'll notice a large grove of trees farthest west on the property. So we've identified that this is a mature patch of trees that the city is interested in maintaining. So working through the planning process with the Public Service Director, Brian Skok, we've identified this as a potential trailhead or park that could have birdwatching potential since there are so many mature trees that overlook a wetland. So something that we recognize as the city that we would like to see and keep and potentially will develop into a park. So here's a closer view at the landscape requirements that are on the previous page. It shows here that no trees are required and then the replacement that's required. So upwards to 900 caliper inches will be added to the site. D.R. Horton has provided some elevations of the homes that are proposed to be within the site. They're from their express line and they range from about 1,500 square feet to 2,400 square feet. So on the screen are some examples of what the home might look like. The developers in the room, if you have specific questions about the home type or floor plans, but just a view of what they're proposing. So order of events tonight. There is a public hearing related to the preliminary plat and rezoning request. So I will wrap up my presentation, allow you to discuss, ask questions of staff or the developer that's in the room. Open the public hearing. Take any and all public comment if anyone should choose. You'll close the public hearing. Again, discuss if there's anything in follow-up. And then we are requesting an action tonight on preliminary plat and rezoning from agriculture to R2. So I will open it up for question and discussion.
Alright, um, we will now open the public hearing. Those wishing to address the Planning Commission should come forward, state their name, and, um, address for the record, and all comments I received in the public hearing will be received and then the public hearing closed. No public hearing comments.
Madam Chair, I do, um, well, I should, you should probably close the hearing first.
You can leave it open for a while if you'd like to discuss.
Okay. Um, Madam Chair?
Sure.
I think I do have a question. It's probably for the developer and it relates to materials on the, the materials that are being used on the house and as it relates to potentially the sound.
Sure.
Um, so I know that there may be some different quality materials when you're adjacent to or near a high-traffic area where sound is an issue. And I just wondered if some of the materials being proposed for this development would address potentially reduction in noise.
Good evening. My name is Deb Ridgeway. I'm with D.R. Horton. With me tonight is Mike Sewell, also with D.R. Horton, and Rob Olson with Westwood Professional Services. The materials for, so our general, um, what we found in doing the noise study is the windows is the biggest intrusion of noise into the house. The standard construction that we do for walls is not an issue, so it's the windows. So we're upgrading the windows on the specific homes that are within this, um, boundary of the noise, um, area, if you will. Does that answer your question?
It does. I know that in other developments, I've seen different siding or exterior materials that are being used to also provide some more of a sound barrier. I didn't know if that was part of the plan, but I, yes.
Right. No, it wasn't. And we did, we did assess just our standard building practices and what, um, what that does as far as noise mitigation. And that was adequate to meet the requirement.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'm here to answer any other questions. I'll just sit here.
You know, I, I do have a question too with respect to the house models that are typical single-story versus most everything that's being built around here. Single-family home are two-story. Any particular reason for?
So these houses are, um, they're, we call them a raised ranch and essentially it's a side-split. So you walk in on the main level and then you go up a few stairs to where the bedrooms and the bathroom are. And then you go down a few to a lower-level kind of family room area. Um, and generally, it's, it allows us to get down to a price point when we're not building a full basement. So it's price-point specific to meet that type of buyer that is in that, that lower 300 to mid-300 range.
Laurie, look like you had a question? No.
I did have a question. On this, um, same topic with the style of homes, is it the same for Phase 1 and Phase 2?
Yes. Yep. And we're building this house currently in Shakopee in our Windermere neighborhood, which is right off of 169 and Marystown Road. Um, so if anybody wanted to ever check out what we're doing, we've actually sold out that neighborhood within a few months of opening for sale. So, um, so it's a pretty successful project or product for us. We're excited to introduce it here.
I think it would be nice to see pictures of the back because it sounds like a different foundation or floor plan that we're used to seeing. And then also just with that seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setback, to see a visual of that.
And when we're saying seven-and-a-half-foot setback, the building is 50 feet wide. And we're putting it on a minimum 65-foot wide lot. So minimum would be seven-and-a-half. Um, so lots are wider, so there will be a bigger, larger-than-15-feet between a number of the homes.
Okay. Thanks, that helps.
Yeah.
I'd just like an explanation of the cutout up on the, next to Outlot F.
So Outlot F was really how the property line goes of the property that we're purchasing. It's a residual piece. Um, we've actually spoken with the adjacent homeowner in the existing house and we're gonna probably deed that to him. He's willing to take that outlot, so he would take ownership and maintenance of that one, as well as Outlot E, which will allow him to connect to utilities and a driveway if he so chooses in the future.
Is he gonna be annexed into the city?
Not with this project, no.
No, but he is aware that this outlot is annexed in the city and he's gonna have to pay city taxes for that.
Okay.
So something that was helpful that the developer did do is provided what's called a ghost plat. So they laid out lot lines as to what this property could look like should he choose to develop in the future, just so we have a baseline of what it could look like if he should choose to be annexed in this part of the city.
With, excuse me, with the landscaping, that, the additional tree planting that's being done around the perimeter, is that gonna involve any berming too or?
Okay. Yes. So along Highway 212, there is a vegetative berm that will be added. So this is a good view of it here. So behind the last house adjacent to Highway 212, you'll see a berm provided here with landscaping on top.
Okay.
The United Properties, what do we have that in the comp plan as? Commercial?
Commercial.
Okay. Because I know around the old bus garage, they had berm and trees and it really was inadequate for what ended up in the bus.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, um, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carry. Any other questions or comments? Uh, I will make a motion to, uh, recommend the approval of the rezoning and preliminary plat with the conditions, that the Planning Commission determines as fit as those stated in the staff reports.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. The next item on our agenda is new business, the Hawthorne Ridge Concept Plan.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission, tonight we have a concept review of a development called Hawthorne Ridge. Again, the project will be developed by D.R. Horton, so there are members in the room if we have specific questions for the development. So the Planning Commission has seen this property before for the comp plan amendment recently. We held a public hearing. Um, and generally, the Planning Commission was supportive of the comprehensive plan amendment to go from a mix of medium density and low-density to all-low-density to allow for development of the neighborhood called Hawthorne Ridge. So you might know this property as Ellen Redmond's Lama Farm. It sits kind of just north of downtown, up on a pretty significant bluff. So area on the site that is buildable is pretty constrained due to the city's bluff ordinance and preservation that will be required of the site. So there are two essentially knobs that are available for development. In total, 92 lots will sit on the property. D.R. Horton held a neighborhood meeting last week and about 16 people neighbor, uh, neighbors attended. Uh, they provided a mailing to 350 feet within the property, which is typical for preliminary plat and rezoning. So blanketed the same group the city will as we continue to move forward with the process. Comments that were received at the neighborhood meeting generally were related to, uh, like a buffer between existing homes and future homes, construction hours, construction traffic. Generally, it seemed like the neighborhood was open for the project to be developed. Nothing came out that was terrifying to them, I would say. General concern, but nothing that was super scary. So the project is accessed off three existing streets, so it's an extension of Ironwood, Aspen, and then Sunny Ridge is the southernmost portion. So here's a better close-up of what the two knobs look like and a little bit of information about the site data. The proposed development does again meet the R2 zoning district, so will not be applying for a PRD. And again, a majority of the site will be maintained in either an outlot to be maintained by the developer or the city. We're working through that right now, thinking about what's on the site, what we want to preserve, but also what that might mean for the city to have it be public land. So that will be a discussion as we continue through preliminary plat and final plat, so anticipate that discussion. Back one more. So generally, um, this is the concept, what it might look like. As we continue to move forward with the process, that's when engineering steps in and we start to get the really detailed plans. So tonight, this is kind of their first blush to get it before the Planning Commission. It's a great time for you to give big comment on things that you see to be an issue, things that you would like to see as they continue through the process, as they are just at concept plan at this point. So I am open for discussion, questions, and again, D.R. Horton is here as well. So no formal action is required, just discussion and recommendation.
I'll, I'll give you some input. I think the out, that outlot should go to the city. I think one of the neighborhood is not big enough to probably be able to support that well. And that's one of the largest wooded areas left in the city and we should take responsibility for it. I know when Hans Hagen caused some problems between, uh, Carver Bluffs East and West because he kind of just sat on a lot and then it got taken over. I mean, something better could have been done with that area than finally what happened with it. So that's my opinion.
So I should also mention that the driveway that's going up to the current farm site is being proposed to be developed as a trail. So if you think about where Snake Trail is right now, that will be a great access point into this property. So we're working through some specifics on that, but that's been identified as a feature that the city would like to see.
Yeah, I, I think that goes right along with, I think the city should take responsibility for that. Everything that's not yellow.
Everything.
Every, so we have all this land here.
Okay, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if you've ever walked up Broadway and that's a beautiful wooded area and it shouldn't remain that way. And I think we heard that when we had the, uh, do we have an open house on, uh, open meeting on this one?
We did have some.
Some public comments.
Yeah.
Right, the comp plan amendment had that public hearing where we received some comment from residents.
You know, and I think people were mentioning they would, they would kind of miss the wildlife and it looks like that could remain, but I don't think the neighborhood could be, should be held responsible for supporting that area.
My feedback is I'd like to see more trails than just the, if I understand it, it doesn't show up on this slide currently presented, but the current driveway would become a path.
Correct.
Trail. But yeah, I'd like to see more feeders into that trail or just...
Madam Chair, if you will, just to add on to that, I know it's a little bit out of the, the scope of what we're looking at, but as it relates to parks and trails, this may be a really good opportunity to do like a nature play area. Um, with you, you have the wooded area and not necessarily put in the playground equipment. I don't know how familiar people are with nature play, but it's kind of going back to the, the roots of, um, tree stumps and, you know, things that you would find in nature that would make up the playground to expose kids to that, that type of thing. And this setting could be, um, very good for that type of, of park.
Any other comments?
Do, what's the price point of these houses?
Hello again, um, Deb Ridgeway. Um, the price point, these will be a different product type than what we're proposing in Meridian Fields. Um, this will be, we call them our Horton series, which are generally two-story homes with full basements. Uh, price points will probably be around 400-plus for, um, the houses.
So this wouldn't necessarily be considered affordable housing?
Correct.
Would the developer be open to selling the lots to individuals or custom builders or would it primarily be only?
We develop and build on our lots. We, we don't sell lots to other builders. I know that was asked at the neighborhood meeting as well.
Madam Chair, I do have another question. It kind of relates to the, the road and the, if you look at the plan north. if you look at the plan north, it looks like there's two access roads to get into the development. They seemed, they seem to me to be pretty close together. Is that unusual for a development to have, I mean, I know it's nice to have the at, two different access points, but it does seem to be a little close.
Sure. So, the right-of-way is actually already platted there, so the streets go to that property line. So, the neighbors on both sides should have a pretty good idea that, yes, the street likely will someday develop. So, I can definitely see that it might be tight, but it is existing conditions.
Yeah, I would say I was surprised to see that Aspen was gonna be extended. Just, Ironwood seems wider and has, just comes off from that light, like, seems like the infrastructure's already there.
Sure. So...
Aspen seemed a little smaller.
For fire protection, we do like to have at least two inlets and outlets in a development of the size. So, we do believe that Ironwood likely would be more of a collector, where Aspen might be more of a secondary access and exit for the development.
But then you don't have a second inlet or outlet for the southern part.
Correct.
Is it just not feasible?
It's largely driven by the amount of lots that are in each portion of the development. So, you'll see the north portion does handle a majority of the homes, where the south is a smaller amount. Also, the street is also platted in the southern portion, and the way that the homes are constructed along Sunny Ridge, there isn't another option for a secondary access.
I would like to suggest, and maybe it's already been entertained and it's just not feasible, but maybe that Aspen Drive would be a one-way. It just, that area I'm really familiar with, and that just seems such a small road for kind of what is about 60 homes?
So, the northern is 66, south is 23.
So, you would suggest it be one-way coming in, or going out? I just, my thought is...
Yeah, I just, Ironwood seems like it can handle so much more traffic.
Yeah.
I don't even know if there's a sidewalk on Aspen.
There isn't.
Okay.
There isn't.
Any other questions, comments?
We, we did try the one-way down here.
Yeah.
Longer one-way.
Well, and I just think of that one-way of like two-lot lengths, and people are gonna cheat that all the time. That's just my thought.
That's a good point.
That was our last experience.
Can I just ask, I'm curious, which, which way are you suggesting, the one-way, in or out?
I don't have enough experience.
All right.
Any other questions, comments, feedback for the developer?
I'll just say, Madam Chair, if I could, just one more comment. I, I agree with the tree comments, to the extent we can preserve that, the best way to do that. I didn't, if we can explore that further, I think that would be great.
Sure. So, a majority of the site that is not, doesn't have lots sketched on them right now is unbuildable. So, it's not possible for someone else to purchase that land and put houses there due to the bluff condition. So, a majority of the site likely will stay exactly how it is. We've just been thinking a little bit through some liability. So, the city is aware of some unique features that are on the property, including the cheese cave that's on the property, and we just want to be careful to think about, if that's on public land, what that means for the city.
I do have one more question for the developer. With respect to these being higher-price-point houses, do you have an existing development in the metro where this type of product is being built?
Yes. We are building this product in quite a few places. Right now, in the same Windermere neighborhood, we'll be constructing a model home with these same types of houses. It's under construction right now. However, in Plymouth, we have a neighborhood called Summer's Edge, and this would be very similar to the product that we're building there. Plymouth is probably the closest to Carver. We also built the houses in The Harvest in Chaska, which is a completed neighborhood now, but it gives you an idea of, of the look of those homes, because that will be the same product type.
Where's The Harvest?
Do you know where Guardian Angels Cemetery?
County Road 110. So, probably about like three miles from here, maybe? Three or four miles from here?
As you're driving to Victoria, you take that little right after Fleet Farm, that intersection, and it's, gotta pass over 212, and you can see all those new houses over there. That's the general area.
I guess I do.
You only go south, Jim?
No, I mean, but 110 runs from Angler to 61, right?
Yeah, so...
It's a little bit north of the Guardian Angels Cemetery.
Okay.
Or you go north of the bus garage, straight up that road.
Yes. Yep, yep. That's exactly it. It's up on the right-hand side.
I have a question for the developer. Being the Carver Historic City, is there a story behind the name Hawthorne?
Or what is? That was the name that we were given by our marketing folks. I don't know what the thought process was, quite honestly. So, I cannot answer that question.
Okay. It sounds very historic.
It does. Yeah.
There was a discussion at the city council level to think about street names in new developments, so the Planning Commission might be tasked with some of that review in the future, to think, how can we bring some of Carver's historic past on some of these properties that we've known for so many years as something, to potentially work with the developer to incorporate some street names that would pay some homage to some of Carver's historic past.
Madam Chair, and I'm just peeking through your Summer's Edge right now online, and I'm seeing a lot of interior photos, but I'm just curious, what are your, what are your?
I actually have some samples. I don't, we probably can't throw anything up on a They're about, they start around 2,000 square feet, and you can get upwards of 4,000, depending on the type of plan. They're generally 50 feet wide, 50 to 60 feet deep.
And you would be proposing a combination of kind of the ranch-style and the two-story, or this is the two-story?
No, just the two-story. We actually looked at doing the ranch-style, but given the grades on the site, it just is too challenging. So, we're sticking with the two-story throughout.
Does, it's a nice-looking product. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to make note, for people who might be watching online, we'll get copies of the proposed home plans and add it to the packet. So, if someone would like to review what the Planning Commission is seeing now, we'll have it available online.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions?
I don't have any. So, collectively, as a staff working with the developer, I've heard that you would like to, like us to think through some preservation and potential park on the property, and then think about Aspen Drive, and how we can make that the best use of a skinny street, and how we might be able to think about that a little differently. I would just clarify, nature play park.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about staff communication?
I will just have the reminder that we have a comp plan meeting on Monday, starting at 7 o'clock here. Packet information went out late this afternoon, so check your email.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Do you know what we might see on the July agenda for the Planning Commission meeting?
That is a really good question. With some of these projects that are kind of in flux right now, we don't have anything that squared away for Meridian Fields or Hawthorne Ridge. I do anticipate that Phase 2 of Oak Tree will likely be on that agenda. So, earlier this late spring, we saw Phase 1. They're looking to develop some of the larger executive single-family lots, so moving into Phase 2 with Oak Tree, which is just north of the dental office on Jonathan Carver Parkway.
And I plan to be at the July meeting, but I may not be at the August meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. I also will note, sorry, I keep interjecting.
No, that's okay.
We are thinking about the Planning Commission date and how we might be able to flip them a little bit. It's tricky when it's two city council meetings in a month, and then the Planning Commission falls outside of those two meetings. So, hoping to either bump it up in the month and maybe find a different day, which is a little tricky with several schedules, but we're working on that at a staff level.
Okay. All right. That being nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.